I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do a roll call, let me swear in Mr. Wolf, so we have our new member in. Mr. Wolf, you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity of my office with fidelity. Congratulations, Mr. Wolf. Welcome back. Mr. Bezos, we want to do the roll call. Mr. Speed will not be here. He's out of state on business. Mr. Bezos here. Mrs. Bytes?
Here.
Mr. Doty?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rappid?
Here.
Mr. Valts?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Under announcements, before I forget, we are going to have a brief executive session following the meeting to discuss some negotiation proposals. Are there any other agenda edits? Seeing none, the procedures for public participation are, as they usually are, where you see public comment on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to make a presentation. Having said that, is there any public comment? While I'm waiting, I might add, please sign the register to...
My name is Nicholas Fiorani. I live in Oakley. I live on 307 Kingston Drive in Douglas, Ohio. I'm in fourth grade at AMU Elementary School. I'm here in the Delta Key Band for next year. I played percussion in the band this year, and I want the chance to play in the band next year. I have been taught by an amazing teacher, Miss Snabley, who may not have a job. Please consider giving a band. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Madison Albright, and I live in Amity Gardens. My name is Madison Albright, and I'm in fifth grade here at Bonacce Elementary School. I have gone to MAC for the past six years, including a full year in Georgia. I performed in a concert last week in this very historic tour. I play the clarinet, and I really enjoy it. How many of you attended fifth grade concert last week? And how many of you attended fifth grade concert last week? Mr. Kurtz, I believe your brother helped us out finding the furniture between sets. Tell him he said thank you. You see, I'm going to middle school next year, so if you cut instrumental music, it won't necessarily have an effect on me. But it will have an effect on my little brother and sister. They won't have the same experience that I had. They won't have the same experience that decades of students before me had. They won't have the opportunity to learn from teachers they are familiar with and trust. They won't have the opportunity to have Mrs. Bellman teach them scales, to cheer them on when they complete their first song, to encourage them to keep trying and practice. You see, unlike Mr. Kurtz and his brother, I care about the people coming after me. I care that they won't get the same benefits I get. You see, I love performing. I love learning how to play my clarinet. It taught me responsibility, because I needed to remember my instrument on specific days. It taught me perseverance, that I had to keep practicing even when the notes were so hard to create. It taught me self-confidence. I love performing and speaking with none of others. You see, Mrs. Bellman didn't just teach me to play the clarinet. She taught me to be a better student. I am sad that every year my mom tells me that the school board needs music on the child line block. That makes me sad, because it tells me, "You don't understand. You don't understand the importance of music education. You don't understand how important being a well-rounded student is." It also tells me that you don't listen. I have attended four meetings with my mom, and I have heard of people have defended the music program. Is it just that you don't hear us, or you don't care?
Thank you. Seeing another public comment, we'll go to the superintendent's report. Mrs. Torshia?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. I heard. I'm just going to give a little bit of news around Daniel Boone. Just to bring everybody up to date, our girls softball team is in a semifinal tonight, and after the third inning, they are tied with Quiddstown. It's one to one, per Mr. Henkel. So just wanted to bring you to date with, or up to speed with that. I would like to first start off with congratulating Ian Kurtz. He has been selected to Berks Best, as a Berks Best finalist in the science environment category. So we're waiting to see how he has done with his interview and if he'll be moving on. But I wanted to acknowledge Ian for that accomplishment thus far. Next, I would like to send out a congratulations to the middle school band and chorus. The middle school band and chorus students did a great job Friday, a week ago, during our Music in the Parks field trip. Both ensembles placed second, and the teacher that sent this was quite proud of her choral group, as this was their best performance of their material so far. But more importantly, the school won an awesome award called the Esprit de Corps Award. This award is given to the school that best demonstrated school spirit, professionalism, courtesy, behavior, and performance, and audience etiquette. So congratulations to the middle school chorus and band. Back to some sports. Some sports news that I have is that in order for the Daniel Boone Girls Softball Team to move on to the next round of counties, they had to defeat Conrad Weiser, which they did last week in a semifinals game. Currently, the girls softball team are ranked number one in District Three. Also, our girls and boys track teams did exceptionally well at the county meet this past Saturday at Governor Mifflin. We have five athletes that ranked first in the county, and we have two athletes, Xavier Smith and Steph Severs, who ranked in the top five in the state. So that's a little bit of information on the track team, but I do have a whole bunch of results with regards to our track team and just the way that they have been performing. First place went to Xavier Smith in the 100 meter, in the boys' high jump. First place to Kenny Worthington, and second place to, now I'm going to do a terrible disservice to, I believe it's Command, McFadden, sorry. Boys' 400 meter, we have fourth place with Kenny Worthington. And boys' long jump, first place to Kenny Worthington again. In our tops four, we have boys' 300 meter hurdles, second place to Anthony Kahn. Boys' four by 100, first place to that team, which is Command, and I apologize, McFadden, Anthony Kahn, Paul Galanti, and Xavier Smith. And our boys' four by 400 placed first, Stevie Severs, Kenny Worthington, Anthony Kahn, Xavier Smith. And overall, they just, they continued to perform quite well. Our girls javelin, second place went to Steph Severs, and we continued to place all the way up through. So congratulations to the boys' and girls' track team. And lastly, I know that I typically sit up here and I acknowledge all of the wonderful things that our students have done, and someone sent me an email to let me know about an accomplishment of one of our teachers. So I received information with regards to Kristin Marsinko, who is a guidance counselor at the high school, and that she is being inducted into the MAC Hall of Fame for her basketball accomplishments at Susquehanna University, where she was Division III Player of the Year her senior year. And her comment was, "Yeah, I'm resting on my laurels," but according to her colleague, they feel that she is not, that she is an outstanding counselor and works hard here and uses the skills she acquired on the basketball court and applies them to her guidance career. So I thought that that was worth sharing as well. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
That is it for tonight.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's much more.
And now for the Blazer Foundation report. Mrs. Conlin?
I have some updates here right now. I should use the analogy about a spring in online auction. We're in our last week for that. The bidding ends on Sunday, May 18th at 9:00 p.m. And I encourage everybody to share that information with your friends, your bandmates, and coworkers. You do not have to be a resident of Daniel Boone to bid on that yet. The website for that is auction.blaizerfoundation.org. So please get the bird out and share that information. Another fundraiser right now, we're in the middle of our Apple appreciation cards for teachers. Major Teacher Appreciation Month, and we have appreciation cards that parents can purchase for teachers, staff members, people that they want to acknowledge, and donations made in competition in there. We also have the Buy-A-Work program. That is, the money that is going to the high school, the Lordham Memorial Courtyard, the outdoor classrooms that I spoke about the last time I was here. People in the district come by and break for us, and that will be incorporated into the actual courtyard. That ends on May 20th, and you can order that online, or you can print a form online and send it in. Either way, that's going to be sold also at the, promoted at the Releas the Life as well. I have some information on the educational improvement tax credit. I may have talked to you a lot about that in the last 12 months. We submitted our manual application. It was due on May 1st, and we submitted it then. I recently, just last week, attended a three-day conference of the National School Foundation Association, of which the Blazer Foundation is a member. It was held in Philadelphia. I advise to say to mention that happens every year. I went to it last year in Indianapolis. With the beginning of Pennsylvania this year, there was a lot of talk about the educational improvement tax credit program, which is unique to Pennsylvania. No other state in the country has this program available to the corporations and to schools. One thing I found out that I want to share with you is there was a lot of confusion, not confusion, but not a lot of explanation of how the school's money works. And I'm fighting through this first year, but I gained a lot of knowledge and was able to talk to a lot of people about it the last couple of days. We, the Blazer Foundation, as a public school, are considered an educational improvement organization, or an EIO for short. In Pennsylvania, 630 businesses participated last year and contributed tax credits to EIOs like the Blazer Foundation. And there was a pool of money that was $30 million. In contrast, there is also a scholarship pot of money that goes to private schools and scholarships for children to go to those private schools. What, and I was aware of this, but what I wasn't aware of is what the contrast was in the two. And I got clarification for that. The scholarship money, the businesses that participated last year, was 2,304 businesses in Pennsylvania, contributed up to $75 million in tax credits. That's how much the state made available to the private schools scholarship fund. So what I didn't realize was what a big difference that was. 2,304 businesses gave to the private schools. Almost 630 businesses were able to give to the public schools. So that pot of money, it kind of put things in perspective for me regarding the difference of the two. And where that comes into play is I am talking with J.P. Matt Terrence, who traditionally have always given to scholarship fund very generously, not realizing that there was this other part of the EIO part they would give to us. So I was looking for a little more clarification for that. And what I found out is that any business that makes a two-year commitment, and we've talked about this before, a two-year commitment, that's the second year they can apply on May 15th for their tax credits. Credits don't become available until July 1st, but all those businesses that already signed up can, they get first dibs on that money starting May 1st. And this is the part that I wanted to make you aware of. Last year, the second-year commitment businesses, they exhausted all tax credits before we, before the EIOs even got a chance to get at it. I wasn't aware of that, and that, I just wanted to align the expectations of the EITC program because of that bit of information. There was $70 million oversubscribed last year, meaning that $200 million worth of tax credits were given out, but $270 million in tax credits were applied for private businesses. So this is very, very competitive, and it is getting more competitive every year. What I would like you to know, and the parents out there, is that it changes our plans a little bit as far as going after any of the local businesses to get EITC money. They are not going to be able to get on the list to get money for that. So what I have on our website is a list of the businesses that participated last year in the EIO part. And I have a list right here, and also on the front page of our website. So this is, again, where I need the help of the parents in the community to look over this list and see if they, if someone works for this business, if they have a contact here, because pretty much this is the only list that we can work for, work from, and we're not able to promote this to the local businesses that did not participate. Sorry, that took a lot of time, but that was, we've talked about a lot, and of course, clarification that just came into focus. The Greenhouse to Table Better Nutrition Program grant that we submitted to the Pottstown Health Wellness Foundation. They should be letting us know by the end of the month. Actually, ran into someone at the convention that said she read that grant, because it's on their board, so she got a good cover face. I'll keep my fingers crossed for that. We should know in the next 30 days, we get that grant. Also, the Blazer Foundation recently took in grant applications from the Daniel Boone School District teachers. We have approved a number of those grants, and we will be letting the teachers know this week, and we'll be sharing that information with you at our next update. I wanted to say a word about volunteers. Our organization is only as good as the people that we have involved in. We need more volunteers. We need more people helping the foundation, more people wanting to get involved. We normally meet the Fourth Thursday of every month at 6:30 at Monocce Elementary. Sign up. People can email me if they are interested in coming to that. Also, this Wednesday, May 14th at 10:00 a.m., we are going to meet at the Pottstown Library to review how to research a grant. We need more people researching grants and bringing them, and will help them along in that process if they're willing to lend their expertise. The next meeting that I give the update to, I want to review what we've accomplished this past year and what the next six months will look like. Any questions?
A couple of questions. So, Mrs. Conlin, what you're telling us is that the state only commits, what, 270 million, I think you said?
200 million in the EITC program, which is the big picture, with one part being EIOs and the other part being the scholarship money.
But that's the tax credits, right?
That's the tax credits.
They only award $200 million of the tax credits to businesses regardless of whether it's EIO or EITC?
No. The clarification on that is that only $30 million is available to the EIOs, and $75 million is available to the scholarships.
Okay, so that's 105.
There's also prepay money as well.
I see.
They didn't give you the figures on that, but I'm assuming that's the difference.
That's the other night.
There's prepay, that's the difference.
I got it. I got it. So they only allocate $30 million to EIOs?
Correct.
Who makes the determination as to what those caps are? Is that the state?
The state does, yes.
Is that the Department of State, or is that the Department of Education? Like, who does that? I.R.F.?
This particular program is run through the new economic, the website is www.bcd.com actually, and it's an economic development segment. And I will tell you, it's actually distributed to Mr. New that I mentioned, that actually originally brought this to my attention, and I called the state and talked to several people that verified.
And so a business that was, that wants to participate and wants to contribute to the EIOs, it first comes, first serve as of May 15th, or if there's already a pre-selected list, and you're S.O.L. if it doesn't, if it's not on the list?
Pretty much, oh, yes. If you are a second, if you have a two-year commitment to take advantage of this tax credit, then you can apply on what they, May 1st.
May 1st, yeah, May 1st, right.
And because this is such a, there is so much competition, those businesses get first in with the money, as the tax credits are released on July 1st.
Those that are already in for two years?
Yes. Now, they're not necessarily discouraging people from applying, although I did have somebody that made a pledge to us, and also how I found out, they called the state, they announced, called the state, and pretty much their customer service said, "Don't bother applying, because you're not going to get their credits." And they're a public school, and they're probably not going to get the money anyways, which is not true. As you know, we bought the EITC money last year.
Yeah.
But that was very discouraging, and that sort of set me on this research process to make sure I understood what was going on. Again, sorry, it took a lot of time.
Done. Worked.
That's a video, that's what I presented to you in the past.
I'm just trying to figure out who we got to talk to at BCD, or what the new P.A. is.
Jim Donal is in charge of that department. He would be a good person to start with. He obviously doesn't allow those tax credits. He doesn't influence them, but he would probably be a high person in that department.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question. So when the foundation was first, you know, I guess, thought about, was there a number put in place that we were hoping to get in those credits as far as what the annual budget of the foundation would be, or no?
Not necessarily. When the consultant was here about noon, I know he spoke quite fondly about the program, and there was a very high expectation that a lot of money would be brought in. But the reality I'm finding out, public schools, you know, it all depends on the connection. I think Wilson brings in 70,000, Great Valley brings in 20,000. Downey Town, I spoke to them at this workshop, they brought in about 20,000. Last year, we brought in around 6,000. And we came in there late in the game. So again, you know, working collaboratively with the community, with the parents, to try to find the right people in these businesses to say, "Hey, put the Blazer Foundation on your list at tax credits." That will be the key.
Just so there's no misunderstanding, that money, no matter how much is raised, does not come into the general fund. That's for projects approved by the foundation, correct?
It is programs approved by the state, and eighty percent of the money we raise through that program passes over to those approved programs. Last year was the TV studio, and that's how we're going to have the TV studio at the high school. The Blazer Foundation funded that through the EITC money that we received.
Mrs. Bytes, you had a question?
I was just wondering, then, would the focus of the foundation migrate more towards grants and grant running? See some sort of limitations on the potential for the EITC?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first part.
Will the focus of the foundation be sort of changing to grant applications, seeing the potential for?
I think the EITC still has a lot of potential. Again, especially if we can get these contacts, and as Matt was saying, we'd like to get a list, which is exactly what happened with BioPharma. BioPharma, they gave us like $3,700 through the EITC. A parent worked there, they, you know, we got the check from them without really having to do a lot of work to get that. So I still think there's a lot of potential for EITC. And maybe in some ways, we've made it easier, because now our list is a lot smaller than it was, you know, going to, presenting to all these businesses. But certainly, we want to keep looking at the grants. We need manpower to do that. We need volunteers to do that. There was two parents that had never really written a grant before that voted, one for the middle school to get the Greenhouse. So we can learn this together, and we can teach people that are willing to put in the time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Conlin. The next item, curriculum and instruction, let me preface this before I turn it over to Mr. Kurtz. I'd really like to get away from voting on items at committee of the whole meetings, but in discussion in the committee, Mrs. Torshia needs an answer tonight on the purchase of these books, if she's going to have enough time to sufficiently train the teaching staff, correct?
Yes.
So having said that, Mr. Kurtz, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martino. We met recently for this meeting to discuss a few things, and Chief Rommel was urging Go-Net textbooks for second grade. Now, Mrs. Torshia would like us to approve these tonight, because she has enough time to train our teachers to get this series ready next year. Took up a lot of discussion, represented by David Hughes in that book group.
Yes.
James gave us a presentation on Go-Net. We currently use Go-Net in grades three to six, so this would be continuing to use. That would be the first item, excuse me, on here to be addressed. There was also a discussion about GPA, dynamic honoring the high school, just clearing up an issue in terms of how that is calculated and when students are notified. We were also given a comprehensive by the administration, who we're thankful for. We heard about YMCA proposal coming into Bonacce Elementary to provide some assistance to parents who may have daycare needs, and we would receive some money from YMCA directly out of space yard buildings. We will be receiving more information from that administration moving forward. And then there was some other things we discussed very, very briefly, including a very brief update on drafting our new curriculum plan. And we very, very briefly discussed an assessment of schedule and when we could go down. The next meeting is going to be next one, I believe, on June 9th, and it will be at 6:00 in the middle school library, ready for this meeting. Other any questions regarding the purchase of textbooks? It was a recommendation, it was not unanimous, it was two to one, recommend the purchase of these textbooks. But it was a recommendation. I guess my question would be, what was the objection?
My hesitation was that we didn't really have a chance to review the material.
The discussion, Mr. Wolf, that ensued is that we're already using the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade versions of these books in... and sixth grade versions of these books in, or we're using them in sixth grade.
Purchased.
We've already purchased them for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And the second grade books would lead right into third grade and the funds have already been approved via a grant.
So... Did you recommend it?
Yes.
The program for third through sixth is working out well?
Uh, we have only implemented it in sixth grade due to the purchasing of the textbooks last year and not having the staff development put in place. And third through fifth grade was not as comfortable in utilizing the new materials. And so, we have begun the process of providing them with staff development, but there's more to be gotten. And due to the snow days and us losing our staff development days back in April prior to the spring break, we have traded off time with, well, I don't want to say traded off time. We're making up that, that staff development time with our teachers' union on the two half-days that they would have had off as compensation for nightly meetings. So, we're bringing them in and they have sat through one part of the session. And the next session is contingent upon us having a contract for the second grade books and being able to continue. Not that, that my proposal for the second grade books had anything to do with the contingency of the staff development training. I would have...
Okay. I mean, it just sounded like we wanted to approve this because it was already in place and working well, unless I misinterpreted that.
It is working well.
It's not in place yet.
Right. It is, it's not, it has not been fully implemented in third through fifth grade because the teachers didn't feel that they could do a, an excellent job or a good job with it without the, the, the training and without the support from...
Who, who else in the county is using the GOLAT?
I don't know. I know that it's being used, but I, off the top of my head, I will have to get that information back to you.
So, I just, now, talking from experience, my kids have been through a couple of math changes of how we teach it and...
This is aligned with the Common Core, which in turn is what the students are tested on in the spring through PSSA testing.
So, how is it different than the way we're currently teaching? Because I've heard a lot of complaints from teachers regarding the methodology of teaching the Common Core math.
The way that it is being taught is we're going back to mastery of learning instead of teaching a concept, testing, and moving on. What they're trying to do is they're trying to, through this methodology, is that they're taking the amount of time necessary to teach the concept, reinforce it in a lot of different ways, through different modalities that are being used via this tool, the web-based information as well. And they're giving them alternatives on, on, you can learn it this way and do it this way, but you can also do it this way because they're going to have to explain it in a different way as they're being evaluated to see if we're doing our job of educating students. So, it's, there's more writing involved with it, there's pictorial, there's, they've got to support their, their addition or subtraction rather than just adding and subtracting.
So, it goes away from memorizing in the actual...
That, that does take place as well. I mean, it would all go into it, but because they're being evaluated differently, we've got to be able to give them tools to be able to...
Does this grant money go away?
No, the, well, the grant money, when the accountability block grant was written last year, it is written to support programs that we have in school and it can be used on a lot of different things. But the way that the grant, and when I picked up the grant, it was already implemented to support adding this program to second grade because it would only make sense to bring it into second, bring it into first so that we have a complete series, you know, K to five, K to six. Mr. Hurley is out in the audience and I could ask him to speak to it because he is using it in sixth grade and the teachers are, they like it, they're not getting any complaints from students, they're not getting any complaints from parents, they seem to be performing pretty well. Do you want any comments from Mr. Hurley?
I mean, I guess, I, as a board, I'd just like to learn a little bit more about what pieces of Common Core were being required and employed by the Department of Education and, and how is it being implemented? Because I've just heard, in speaking firsthand with a lot of teachers, that they're not thrilled with the methodology or the modalities that are being required to teach. And I understand that this date is, you know, implies these constraints on, constraints on us says, look, we're going to test you this way, so you need to teach this way so that the kids are successful in terms of scores. But at the same time, I don't know whether that's the best thing for our students. And so, is there, you know, and it's unfortunate, you know, Mr. Subers isn't here tonight, but I'd also like to know what our legal remedies are in terms of pushing back a little bit on implementing these types of modalities.
Let me, let me just expand on the committee discussion a little bit. You had three committee members who all are against Common Core. I don't know any other way to say it. We're not happy with the fact that Common Core is now the state mandated requirement. However, we had a teacher in there who explained how well it's working in sixth grade. Mr. Hurley was very happy with how it's working in sixth grade. We've purchased the books for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And, and my thought at least was that if they're going to learn it this way in sixth grade and we're going to start teaching it this way in third, fourth, and fifth grade, then shouldn't we start as soon as possible preparing them for that curriculum for third, fourth, and fifth grade? Especially since the money's already been allocated. I mean, if something changes with Common Core, and that question, I raised that question in there, what if with an administration change, either in November at the state level or two years from now at the national level, if Common Core disappears, then what? The, the books that were purchased were purchased with a five-year contract. These books would be purchased with a four-year contract to coincide with the end of the five years. That, that's the information that we have.
One of the other things that came out of committee was that there was, there's a potential for having to have parent workshops so that the parents could help the, the second graders learn them and help them at home. So, you know, that raises concerns for me and I hope to take a little more time and decide cautiously if we want to, you know, drop this on the second graders or maybe not. Maybe we want another year before they're developed and get them with it in third grade. I'm not sure that we should be rushing into Common Core in second grade.
Overall, Common Core is aligned to our new teacher evaluation tool, which is linked to the growth index of our students in school and then ultimately tied to where we perform and how we perform according to the school performance profile, which then is linked to the amount of money that we get. So, if you don't perform well and you don't score in the top tiers, you're not getting the funding.
No, I, I understand the game that has to be played to get the funding that you need. And that's how they always get you. I guess my concern is, you know, is there an alternative plan? I mean, you know, is there a way to teach amongst all the modalities that you're required to provide? Is there a, let's say there's four of them, can we provide a fifth, which may be the quote-unquote traditional methodology of teaching math, of just simply adding things together instead of using number lines and moving things backwards and forwards and explaining in five, you know, sentence, paragraph, how to put two numbers together? I mean, I just...
You'd have to look at the testing to be able to understand what they're asking our children in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, all the way up to Keystone testing to do.
There, doesn't sound like there's an alternative.
Well, there, there is. I don't want to sound like there isn't an alternative. What I'm saying, what I'm asking for is we have this program in place. In order for us to be able to best monopoly, or, or, what do I want to say? To be able to score the best that we possibly can, let's start working with the children at, you know, the feeder levels that are coming up because they don't do a lot of reteaching. Obviously, if children aren't making the gains that they need to because they aren't getting math, we have in place for right now supports for children to be supported through our math interventionists, you know, through their teacher currently, et cetera. So, that's GOLAT.
Mrs. Torscha, let me, let me ask you a follow-up on Mr. Rathgib's question. This money was in the block grant that was written last year?
Correct. That was approved to be spent for the 2013-14 school year.
And it can't be used for anything else?
At this point, the, the money has been allotted to the support of the math program.
So, if we don't use it this year, it in essence goes away?
Um, it probably, I would have to check to see how that would be changed. Either I would have to realign it to something, but I'm not sure what it would go to. It would have to go to support something else curriculum-based.
And the reason for the vote tonight that you explained to us in the committee meeting is that...
I'm trying to get staff development in, for two, in two weeks.
In two weeks.
Right. For Friday, May the 23rd, I guess it is, which is our other half-day.
And this is a tee-up for next year?
Yes.
Will you be doing the staff development for third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade also?
They all are getting it. I, I want to continue it because it's a lot of information in a short amount of time that they have to work with the, the suppliers, with Hoot Mifflin.
Any other discussion? Is, is there a motion to approve the purchase?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Radasky, second by Mr. Kurtz. Other comments or questions, Mr. Basil?
Uh, Mr. Basil, no. Mrs. Byt's?
No.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgib?
Yes.
Mr. Speedy is out here. Mr. Fadalski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes six to...
Is there any other report, Mr. Kurtz?
No, I think I summed it all up.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Kurtz? Any public comment on the curriculum and instruction committee report? Seeing none, buildings and grounds, there, there's no facilities report, Mr. Radasky?
No, facilities did not meet this one.
Okay. Want to go right into revenue enhancement, please?
Sure. Revenue enhancement did have a brief meeting on May 5th at 6:00. We did one from the recommendation on the advertising so that that could be voted on this month. And in your packets that went out with the agenda, there should have been an advertising rate structure, which is the recommendation from the athletic facilitator. And she will be spearheading that program to work with local businesses to try to secure advertising. So, it was the recommendation of the committee to utilize that rate structure. Some of the feedback that she had received from previous rate structure was that it was, it was too cost prohibitive. So, we, we restructured it, or she had restructured it a little bit. The second item that we talked about was the agreement with Market Street, which I guess the previous, or the board last year had signed an agreement with them to try to solicit advertising. The, the committee's recommending terminating that agreement. We have not heard really much feedback from them, actually until Mr. Subers reached out to them to kind of see what was going on. We hadn't heard anything. They did, I sorted out the email, they did give us one proposal for advertising. The committee looked at it. We did not think it was financially beneficial to the district for what the advertiser was asking. We talked a little bit about maybe going back and forth with the advertiser through Market Street. And we decided that the committee didn't really think that that was the way to go, but rather to just terminate the agreement and allow the boss to have an opportunity to try to solicit ads. The other thing we did talk about, which I apologize, it's not for an agenda item, but maybe it could get added for next time if it has to or for the voting meeting. We did recommend, we were recommending that the school actually purchase a banner, an advertising banner itself to put out there that kind of says, to see your ad here, call with her, you know, with the phone number for the athletic facilitator to kind of give, to start the process so people might see it. The banners, it would just be the cost of whatever banner we chose. And we thought maybe one for the gymnasium and one for the stadium. You're looking at probably about $500 for that. So, I don't know if that needed to be a motion or if that could just be, you know, a purchase. But we, we thought it would be a good idea to have that out there so people knew how to get their advertising out there if they wanted.
Good idea.
So, and that was really the whole meeting. So, if anybody has any questions or, you know, thoughts, we'd certainly like to hear them. That's what, what our recommendations are.
The Market Street group, if I remember correctly, last year, we pay them nothing. Is that not right? It's only if they sell advertising, they get a percentage of what they sell?
Correct. And I, I believe, and that was one of the things that we were looking at with the proposal. I believe they get a third, approximately a third. And like I said, with the advertisement proposal they, they had given us, it wasn't so much the signage, it was, there was a lot of other things that went along with it that the advertiser wanted. And we just thought it was excessive for the, the financial benefit.
In terms of accessibility to everybody else?
To the students and, correct, to the students and the parents. So, you know, and, and again, if the board thinks that that's a good idea, pursue, we can cert, Mr. Subers did say, we could sign, you know, we could sign, accept proposals from Market Street and still market our own advertising. The thing, the only thing that kind of concerned the committee with that is that, that advertiser would have first rights for the press box every year. So, if they wanted it, it's not like we could, if we had somebody that came to us and said, we'll give you twice as much if we can be on the press box, we don't have that option. They had the right of first choice on that. So, that was one of the reasons we were recommending, recommending not accepting that.
Do you, do you need to vote on any of these things tonight? Just can wait till next week for the voting meeting?
Yeah, we're fine.
And I do have language that was provided to me by Brian Subers to be able to completely terminate with Market Street.
Okay.
Did they have a reason, did they, when you reached out to them, you know, because we spent a lot of time on this last year? Did they have a reason other than the economy or, you know, what was the reasoning for not being able to sell advertising?
I, I don't think there was any reason. I mean, I don't even think they addressed that.
They, they just weren't, basically we signed a speech favor, they just went their own way and basically they did nothing for a year.
Correct. Until we, until we knocked on their door and say, hey, what's going on?
They, they threw this proposal out to you as like, oh, better give them something?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I know that you, I know that you guys spent a lot of time on them. That's why I actually, I had asked Mr. Boyer at, before he, like, a few months ago, if he could reach out, maybe see if they could attend a meeting or something so we could see what was going on. And we didn't really hear anything, so...
They had a great sales pitch, you just didn't follow it up with the action that they promised in the sales pitch.
Yeah, maybe they're just using us as leverage to get more accounts with other school districts. You know, you have a client list that, oh, we can, boom, we get this school, we get that school.
See, what I couldn't tell from like the agreement, I, I mean, I don't know, like, when you guys did that, I don't, I don't know if they had set advertising that they were specifically going to try to sell in prices or if they're just out there kind of making things up as they go. Oh, do you want to advertise? Well, we, so I don't know if the rate, if the proposal they gave us is a fair proposal, if it's to be twice that much, if what other, what they're selling it to other schools for in the area, if they are, any of that.
Yeah, my understanding is depending on what the advertiser was looking for, for access. I mean, we, we had a lot of concerns about what they would do to the buildings, you know, the structure. Kenny had to drill into the walls and mount something, what happens if the students were to face them? You know, they were going to put banners maybe across lockers, we had, you know, concerns about that. But it really, it was, it just seemed like the wild west when it came to what they were going to be able to sell. What basically was, they would get some money and then try to sell them on, what, how, how money do you have? Okay, here's what we can offer. That's basically how, to me, what my memory was.
And, and we kind of thought that, and, I mean, Ms. Rath spent a couple of revenue enhancement committee meetings with us talking. She really thought that, you know, she, she knew some local people she thought that could get banners up or would, would, would get banners. And we thought, as you get some, then maybe more people will see it and be like, oh, I, I'd do that. So, it's almost like rather than, you know, try to get a number up here and have nobody, if we can lower the number a little bit and start getting some banners. And the few that are out there, their contracts up this year, that's why we wanted to, to set the rates for next year. And then if somebody wanted... And then if somebody wanted something different than a banner, you know, they could say, "Hey, do you have any other options?" And then we could look at maybe the press box or something else.
Any other board comment or questions? Any public comment on Revenue Enhancement Committee? Seeing none, move into Finance. Any discussion on course approvals? Seeing none on Budget Discussion. Mr. Basil is Chair of the Finance Committee, do you want to lead this?
Yeah, I'll take, so, one of the issues that I've been sort of struggling with here in the transition between business managers is just getting my arms around the different sets of numbers that were being thrown around. Mark had one set, Mr. Selvich has another, and our new business manager is trying to get his arms around what the numbers are as well. I have to say, I'm a little, I feel like a ship without a, without a, without a rudder here, because normally we have a pretty good idea as to what each line item, you know, cost is, and now we've got two different sets of numbers, and I'm almost afraid we may have a third as we, as we get into it. But we were just talking a few minutes before the meeting, and we're going to need next week to sit down and go through the different line items. I forwarded out to the board, I copied the board, as well as Ms. Torja, and our Business Manager, Assistant Business Manager, what template was that we used last year. I have the numbers as of, I've got a set of numbers here in front of me as of April 14th for certain line items, and I just want to make it some verification if those are indeed the numbers. And then we could, I think it would be a little bit easier to use the template that we used last year, which is a one-page summary of just, you know, here are your expenses, here are the options in terms of cuts, and what those different options are in terms of dollars, here are the revenues, here's, you know, how those revenues would be impacted by decisions you make, and fund balance and tax revenue available, and then we just start putting the pieces together. I mean, it's not, in terms of making decisions, it's really, the hard part is deciding, you know, what stays and what goes, and how much fund balance to use, and how much tax dollars to use. It's what it's been every single year. And it's just a question of capital rationing. So, but before we can even start that process, we need to have confidence in what the numbers are, and how much money we have available to spend out of fund balance, and I don't think we have those, have that with certainty as of yet. So I would think by the, sometime next week, maybe we can schedule a Finance Committee meeting next Thursday, or depending on people's availability, and we can sit down and run through the numbers and make sure we have a good foundation for that, and we can get them out to everybody before the next meeting as a board, and then we may need to have a special meeting to approve the budget that will be released to the public 30 days prior to June 30th, so May 30th or whatever that day would be, I don't know if that's a Tuesday or whatever after Memorial Day.
I had a brief discussion with Mr. Small about that very thing today. The budget has to be completed, final, by June 30th.
Correct.
We have to have a 30-day window prior to that. Memorial Day is Monday, the 26th, so it would have to be sometime that week. We'd have to have a special voting meeting to approve the preliminary for the public.
Right.
And then the same thing would happen in June, because of the 30 days following that, we wouldn't make the June 23rd voting meeting, so you'd have to have another special voting meeting. So, and, Mr. Small, did, are you aware of this template that Mr. Basil was referring to?
I just sent it to you, yeah. You do have it.
I'll check with the rest of the committee members, but I would say next Thursday, 22nd.
Should we have a second meeting?
Yeah, we have a meeting.
The 19th. The 19th.
19.
I was saying, I was saying the 26th.
No, it's because of Memorial Day, it's the 19th.
Five Mondays? Yeah. So we meet next week instead of, gotcha.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, we, yeah, I mean, I would, you're good with the 22nd?
Yeah.
Mr. Rafke, are you good with the 22nd?
Uh, depending on what time.
What time would you be?
I could, I could probably, I'd say anytime after like 6:30.
6:30, Mr. Martino?
Yeah, I'm available.
So we'll do it Thursday, 22nd, say 6:45. All right.
Thursday, May 22nd at 6:45?
We'll do it at the new office at APC. Thursday, 22nd at 6:45.
At the APC?
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Basil, where are we as far as expenses to budgets this year? The reason I vote is always the obvious one. If we have all these tough decisions, what we're going to do, and then we push the $700, $600, $1,000 surplus. Do we have an idea?
The last idea, we were, we were $300,000 under budget for the year, but that was a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know if that still holds true or not.
It's very close to that.
So we are under budget still.
Yeah, Mr. Small told me that, do you have better information by next week?
Which is good news, obviously.
Could we get that report on a regular basis? I know some school districts do.
Board summary report?
Yeah, actual to budget and, thank you.
Typically, we, we have the Finance Committee meetings, we have that report, and we get that, and then obviously we push that out to the whole board. But with the budget meeting that we had, you know, in April, and the other one we had in February, like, we were using Finance Committee meetings for budget meetings, and that just obviously wasn't coming out as far as we discussed, but I agree with the whole heart when that should come out on a monthly basis.
I remember what you see, I think maybe just between the changes of the different business administration, I think it maybe just hasn't gotten done, but I know that is something we used to.
That'd be great, yes.
Is anybody, I'm curious, and then Mr. Martino has some connections, or Mr. Basil, but have you heard anything more definite about the shortfall in Harrisburg, that's an effect, education funding?
You know, it's funny you should ask, let me give you an update on Harrisburg. They recessed until June 2nd, so they are not doing anything right now, except working on their primary campaigns. And they will come back June 2nd and spend four weeks frantically trying to develop a budget. So no, there's nothing new from Harrisburg.
They paid for celebrating?
Yeah, something, something between the 20th and the 2nd, they're on holiday, I guess.
Any other comments or questions about Finance? Seeing none, is there any public comment on Finance?
Beverly O'Quinn, while I'm laying this out. I'm here to address what we just, actually all just heard, that we are under budget, under budget with elementary bans still cut and not in the budget. I'm here in support of elementary banning put back in for next year. It sickens me that every meeting I come to, something else is being cut that provides enjoyment and learning in my children's day. I personally written to each and every one of you, and two of you wrote back to me. So I would like to thank the two of you that took the time to respond. It didn't have a forum letter, it was a personal email from me that I thoughtfully put into words my feelings, and I appreciate the two of you that answered me. I would have appreciated a little acknowledgement from the rest of you as well. In my email, I cited the many advantages of music at the elementary level, some of them being increased academic performance, improved short and long-term memory, enhanced fine motor skills, increased language ability and confidence. I don't feel the need to reiterate all the same points again and again, you've heard them and you've read my email, I assume. We have all expressed them. What I do feel the need to reiterate is the fact that as board, you aren't listening to what people want. The people that voted you in office are asking you to leave it in the budget, and you repeatedly are ignoring us. These are the same people that voted you in office, believing that you would stand and fight for what we want, and these are the people that you're dismissing. One of you stated in your reply to me that we can't be a district of constant increases. We also can't be a district of constant decreases, which is all we've had for the last six years. Mr. Martino, I would like to personally address the email that you sent out to your DBTA group, and you called those of us that speak out of these meetings part of a special interest group. Special interest, not sure what your definition of that is, unless of course you count my child as my special interest.
My name is Diane Marsden, 304th and Drive, Birdsboro. I applaud the youngsters that stood up today and the woman who just spoke. I second the fact that we've, year after year, taken away from our child's, our children's education. I have an eighth grader going to the high school next year, I have a sixth grader who, up to, you know, up to several years ago, I was so proud of the district they came from. I also have somebody coming to kindergarten this fall. Unfortunately, he is not going to have full-day kindergarten like the other children did. So I'm asking you to seriously think about the children, which is why you're supposed to be school board members, why teachers want them to teach, and why, you know, parents feel so strongly and want what's best for their children. So consider what is in our taxes. I don't want to pay any more than I have to, but that's what's right for our kids when we keep decreasing. With that, with that said, I also understand there are people who a tax increase is a great burden. Not that it wouldn't be a burden on me, but there are people who are on fixed incomes. And that's one reason I wanted to come up tonight, because I actually am a teacher, and I work in the Fleetwood School District, and we have a program designed for senior citizens on a fixed income that's been in place for a number of years. I don't remember how many, I actually brought two copies of things from our school district's website, it's called the Smiles Program. And senior citizens, anybody above the age of 60 can volunteer in the schools, and we actually have people that, you know, help out with the cafeterias and different things, and it's a true benefit to them, and they get $5.99 for every hour they put in, up to, I believe, 100 hours. So it only comes out to $599, so they don't have to claim it as income, and they get that as tax credit a thousand a year. So we could raise taxes for, we could raise taxes and keep a lot of programs, but we could also be sensitive to those people who it definitely is a hardship. So I only have two problems, because I was printing it at home, but that's definitely something to look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just actually, I want to take a moment to sort of address the last two speakers, and actually everyone in the room. So first, regarding the number of emails that we receive, I'd say in the last two weeks, we've received over 100 or 200 emails from folks. Quite simply, I don't have the time to reply to all of them within that time period. I try to take an average reply to as many as I can, but I can't quite get to every single one. So I think it's only fair to give the board the benefit of the doubt that we do get your emails, we do read them, I read them, I read every single one of them, but I don't always have the opportunity to write a response. Second, we have a program for seniors, we had one for quite a long time here, where people could volunteer for the school district, and they got some sort of tax credit from the schools, we just don't get seniors to volunteer, and they're limited in what they can volunteer for. Third, we already have a tax increase in this budget. That seems to be lost in every single discussion that we have here. We have a tax increase in this budget for next year, and we still don't have enough money to pay for all the programs. That's just the way it is, and the reason for the increases in our budgets from one year to the next, in large part, is due to the collective bargaining agreement that we had signed five years ago. Okay? $3.5 million budget deficit, 2.6 million goes to salaries and benefit increases. Now, I'm not here to argue about whether that's good or bad, or whatever it is, it just is what it is. Okay? And it's something we all have to live with, and so that's where the money's going. And quite frankly, our only alternative is to cut programs, raise taxes, and use fund balance to balance the budget. So it's a question of not find more, just raise taxes even more, or go find another source of revenue to bring it in to pay for these things. Something else has to get cut if we're going to keep elementary ban. So we can line up another program and cut that. Okay? Or we have to figure out some other way to pay for this. I don't know where the other revenue comes from, they need to come up with $200,000 to pay for it. So that's the job of this board over the next 30 days, is to figure out, just like we did last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, for every single year, we saved that program, we're going to try to figure out a way to save it again this year. I don't know whether we'll be successful or not, but we're sure going to try. Telling us that music is important, I mean, we understand that, we get it, you know, it's the reason why we've worked to keep it. And you have people up here very passionate about music, their children all play music, we pay for lessons for music, and so we hear what you're saying, trust me when I tell you that, we hear every single word that you're saying, that music is important to your children, and it's important to the school. We get it. It's the reason why we reached out to alternative organizations that are in our community to help, help us with this situation, because we don't want to see music disappear. And, you know, I guess that's all I have to say on the matter. I just want everybody to make sure that you understand that we already have a tax increase built into this budget, and we're working hard to figure out a way to pay for everything that we can, and save it for forever. I mean, we leased out buildings to generate alternative revenue, we're doing demand response, we're, we've looked at advertising, we closed down buildings that we didn't need, we're constantly looking at ways of saving money and generating alternative revenue so that those things can pay for the stuff that's very important to us.
I just want to add too, to say that we're not listening, that's exactly what we're doing, we haven't made a decision on this yet, not until that budget is finalized in June, so we're listening to everybody, we're reading our emails, we're trying to find resources to pay for the things that we want to keep, but please be assured that we are trying to do our best service to the community. I'm sorry that we're not coming off that way, but to reiterate, the maximum tax budget is in the proposed budget right now, it's on books. I don't know what else we can say about that, we're restricted by law as to how much taxes we could, right? We could do each year, so we're trying here. I'm sorry.
We're also restricted on programs we can cut, the state feels like reading and science and math and history is more important than music. Whether it is or not, we're mandated by law to provide certain programs, so unfortunately the things that, even though we think they're important, and we know they're important, and we know that they make a well-rounded student, those are things that the state says you don't have to provide, so we don't have so many choices.
And personally, I'd like to think that anything we are cutting, we'll bring back as soon as we can. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Morris, 124 Bird Street. You just said about how the state doesn't feel that science, or, I'm sorry, you did say that the state feels that science and social studies and things of that sort are important, which I totally agree. My son's in middle school, he plays band. He doesn't take science, he takes band, he gets great. So as we had spoken on the phone, Ms. Torja, what if somehow you can get with elementary? And I don't know if this is possible, but elementary get a grade for it. I know high school no longer does it, but the middle school literally gets a grade for band. If they don't come to their concert, you get in trouble for that, you get zero if you come to your concert, if you don't come to your practices, you get a zero for not coming to your practices. Why is something like that not implemented into with the elementary? I mean, my son literally does not take a science class in middle school because he has band, that's his class. He opts out of one of those state mandatory classes. I'm sorry, you're shaking your head again?
I can't imagine that if he can opt out of a state mandated class, maybe he only needs so many years of science, and he's taking band as an elective, but I don't think we can allow any child to opt out of something that they're mandated to take by the state.
He has social studies this year.
Mr. Hurley?
studies, he has his language, his gym, his music, his art, his computer. He does not have a science class in seventh grade, he has band.
Mrs. Torsia said she'd look into that, but...
Okay. I mean, that was just...
Our understanding is, is that there are courses that are required and there are courses that are not, and elementary band is not. So, Mrs. Torsia will look into it.
Right. But it's, you know, it's kind of one of those, like I look at it as if they get graded in middle school, then can't you get graded in elementary school? If you play an instrument, that's just all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the podium with solutions instead of always just illustrating the problems.
Hello, Glenn Uche, I'm 364 Riverwood Drive. I appreciate everything you said about budget and you guys are trying to do your best. I just wanted to bring up a couple more things about the band situation. The middle school, you mentioned, got second place, and it got this award. This was accomplished only because of the strong elementary band, and I highly doubt we'll ever see the middle school get an award for music without having that foundation in the elementary school. And this is going to cause a concern to the families who want to think about moving to the area with having a music program that's not available. Just to let you know also, the elementary school is going to be playing at the Fidenfield Gate on May 18th. This is a wonderful experience for the children to play in front of a whole audience, participation, pride in their school, pride in working with one another. They are also a blessing to this community, which I'm not sure if you're aware of, but every single year, the elementary school goes to two assisted living facilities here in Epplestall, and they fight for them. So that's a wonderful thing that they do, that they really enjoy. And obviously, if the program goes, it will have a cascading effect for the middle school and the high school, I think less of the students in the middle school and the high school will really require our pride in our music program.
Thank you.
Amy Hicks, Ontario, W. S. L. Mr. Beasley, you spoke pretty eloquently about how we've got the tax increase in place right now, and still recommend making cuts. But if we rewind to this time last year, there was a tax increase in place. However, by the time the final budget was approved, the tax increase was taken away. At the same time, there was over $100,000, $700,000 surplus, which could have been used to save programs and was not. I just want to remind everybody that had that tax increase taken place last year, we would not be having this discussion this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we can move on to personnel. Is there any discussion about personnel?
Regarding the principal position, the principal position at Birdsboro Elementary?
The transfer.
The transfer?
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be a replacement for that?
Oh, yes. Yes. There will be, and it would be something that I would put on for the next, once this is, once the position's open, then I will post for it and go through an interview process and, yes, and then I will propose a replacement.
Are we preferring to promote somebody from the band?
For the principal position, I am going to open it up to anyone that has principal certification, and we'll go through an interview process, absolutely. I think that it's a positive approach to utilize staff that are highly qualified and are dedicated to Daniel Boone.
I always believe it's better to be overseen by somebody who knows this inside and out.
Right. And then also opens up opportunity for any potential furloughs to be reinstated as well.
You are posting that as a 10-month?
I will post that as a 10-month because I feel that the principal who is going to be at Monocacy Elementary Center, which won't change, Mrs. Hefter, would have the leadership skills to be able to act as a principal and have someone working at the other building as an assistant to run the day-to-day operations, to be able to recommend to you a lower administrator at a lower salary.
Trying to find good words there, right?
Yes, yes. Trying to, you know, take reductions as well. So that would be coming in, in June, once I can post and review.
And these are changes that are just consistent with the fact that we are sort of a declining enrollment, declining district right now?
Well, the two recommendations, or you mean the proposal to, for director of...
The fact that we would be replacing the principal with an assistant principal position because the declining enrollment.
Well, that and because, quite honestly, I feel that the work that needs to be done over the summer at the elementary level can be completed by two full-time people opposed to a third, and that if there would be a need for that third person to come in, they then could take a day off throughout the school year, because if they were 10-month, they wouldn't get vacation time. They would have sick and personal.
Mrs. Torsia and I have discussed this, there's not really a lot of reduction in enrollment in that area.
Right.
This is, Mrs. Torsia's feeling that is the best structure for this district.
They have a qualified principal to be able to do evaluations, to be able to manage the building, to address discipline, and to have the mentor of somebody that's a senior principal. And if, you know, we would have to grow and fill the buildings between the two as full K5, then we would have to look at that person running an entire building.
Thank you.
Yep.
So if the board would, what Mrs. Torsia has attached is the job description for the director of curriculum, which is a new title, and it's actually a position in lieu of the assistant to the superintendent position that Mrs. Torsia held. So she, we're not replacing the assistant to the superintendent, we're filling this new position. And then the coordinator of instructional services would go from 11 months to 12 months?
12 months, correct.
Is that correct?
Yes. Because of the amount of responsibility that will be on the two of them.
Any comments or questions? Any public comment on the personnel matters? Any comments or questions about anything under programs? The enrollment, the donations?
Do we have the enrollment numbers for River Rock?
We do not have enrollment numbers for River Rock, only because they are not, they haven't shared anything with me. I know that they're working with Boyertown and that they have an agreement with them. I don't know how many students that is at this point, but I have not had a meeting with Mr. Capifare.
Can we get them? Because I think according to the lease out of the January of 2014, we were supposed to be getting them. There's some rumors flying through the community, I just don't want things getting out of hand's stores, good communication. Or is there some reason that we wouldn't want to communicate their numbers?
No, and I think that they're, they know that they have certainly our students that would be attending the program, and I know that they, I don't know if they have solid numbers to be able to give to me with regards to the other schools, but I will check and see what they have lined up and what they have contracted with other schools. I can certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Torsia, what the individual obviously wants to remain anonymous and donated $500, is the district going to send them an acknowledgement and thank you even though they are anonymous?
Yes. I have asked my secretary to make sure that we get something out for that.
Thank you. So I'd just like to publicly thank the foundation and the PTC for donating to technology and Odyssey to Mind and the field trip to kindergarten students.
Yes, we haven't actually voted to accept it yet, but with Mrs. Conlon here, and I don't know if anyone's here from the PTC, but believe me, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Mrs. Torsia, could you briefly, for my benefit, better explain this resolution opposing restricting the federal medical assistance?
I am going to ask Mrs. Makowski to come up to the podium to better explain, only because this is something that's coming through special education. Sorry, Shelley.
Good. This is actually a resolution that was developed by Andy Faust, and all of the First County School Districts presented to their board to send off to the governor. What has happened is there was a new company that took over the access billing and funding, and they have really severely restricted our reimbursement. So there's all of this money that we bill for, and in the past, we've received reimbursement for, and not just us, all of the districts and including the intermediate unit, that we have not received reimbursement for. There's hoops to jump through now, we've done everything that we're supposed to do as far as submitting the forms in a timely manner as well, and they're just continually saying, well, there's exceptions, and now you need to do this to get the money. So no one is receiving the money. The money that we've received in comparison to the past is probably maybe a quarter of what we received, and as you know, access reimbursement has been a large part of the budget that we've received reimbursement for. So it's just, it's pretty much a standard form that all of the boards in the county have adopted to show support that the governor look into it and release the funds.
What number are we talking about? What's the dollar figure that we bill for versus what we've done reimbursement? What are those numbers?
We, and again, we don't have a dollar figure. What we've been, we've gotten, and maybe Mr. Small can, can help, he can go back and look, it's been minimal, minimal.
Are we saying like hundreds of thousands of dollars?
That we haven't received? Yes, yes.
The money is beginning to flow this week. The question is, this has been going on for two years since they changed the firm that's handling this. So the money that's flowing, we haven't been able to get a clear picture, is this some of the last year's money, is it all this year's money? But PDE did get involved about 10 days ago, and as of this week, some is beginning to flow, where before we were getting nothing, which is what prompted this, but not to say this resolution should be adopted.
Right.
There are problems, but it is, it is beginning to free up somewhat, but the bigger picture is trying to identify what year it's for.
But in line with what Mr. Wolf asked, you said we've done all the proper submissions, do we know how much money we've submitted for?
You've budgeted for a half a million dollars for the last couple of years.
Right. And as far as, we'll have to go back and get the figure exactly what we've submitted for, but it's a lot, it's a lot, because we do all of the, everything we can bill for, we do.
Yeah, but for, for the next meeting, I'd like to know...
How much we submitted for?
How much we submitted for, a lot doesn't count, and budgeting a half million dollars doesn't count.
Absolutely.
I'd like to know what's outstanding.
I'm amazed that we're, we're a relatively small district, 500,000, there's 500 school districts, and I would think there'd be people with pit for it, except the state...
They have that.
I mean, I mean, listeners, you don't have anything that, any other recourse? I mean, that's a resolution, I mean, that sounds, that's kind of a...
Is this money coming out of acc, is this the money that refunds the access funds you have?
Yes.
So we're just drawing down the access funds without reimbursement at this point?
Correct.
And how much longer before we deplete those funds? Does anybody know?
I don't know. I have an answer for you.
How much we've submitted for?
Any other questions on the resolution?
Just one other question, Mr. Small, you said some firm was controlling this?
Yes, in the past, it was Leader.
Yeah.
And two years ago, they changed to a firm that was out of Boston, actually, and I...
Right, because they put it out for...
It's got three letters, I can't say the three, the company, but they went out of state. Leader was, I believe, Hazelton, one of their locations, but this firm is outsourced out of state, they do have offices in Harrisburg area, but things just came basically through a screeching halt two years ago.
Basically, I'm sorry, penciling it is requiring a blanket letter of denial, and no insurance companies, of 100 insurance companies, nobody even writes something. So they're asking, is that basically, if they're asking for something that doesn't exist, just to make a stump through loop, we can't retain?
Right.
Is that what they're saying?
Right. And it's continual, it changes all the time with what they're asking us for and asking us to do. We've done everything that we were asked to do.
Maybe we should generate a bill for our extra time and align all that.
Yeah. So I'll get that, I'll get that information to you, Mary Beth, and then you can share.
Thank you.
One more thing, historically speaking, when we pass resolutions, there's a better mechanism for someone to follow up with the legislators and coordinate, you do that, Mrs. Craig?
Yes.
Because a resolution by itself doesn't really have any teeth, but if we follow up with someone, sometimes you get some results.
Unfortunately, we haven't had anybody respond to our resolutions.
Any other questions about the resolution? Public comment on any of the items listed under programs? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy. Mr. Kurtz, do you have any policy committee meeting on May 14th?
That's correct, and it will be 5:30 in the district office library, and that will be PDE C, it's a double move, and it will be 5:30 in public at 12.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Transportation, Mrs. Torsia.
What I will propose at the policy meeting is that we review something that's been awarded by the state, and that is to be able to have audio on school buses along with the video, and our bus contractors would like to have this included as part of their ability to, you know, keep children and their behaviors in check while riding the school bus, 72 students to one adult. What I would ask is that, what I will do is I will bring some type of policy, see if there's districts that have adopted policy for this, and to begin that process, because they would like to have this implemented at the beginning of the school year, or as close to the beginning of the school year, if the board wishes to adopt this.
What kind of disclosure do we have, are we mandated, if any, to provide to the parents of students on these buses?
Typically, we, if there's video, we share the video clip of what their child is doing. I don't know that there's anything signed that we have.
No, but once you report, you have to know...
Right. And that's the part that we'll have to identify as to the requirements that the state is saying that you need to have, but they are saying that you first have to adopt a policy before you can go ahead and, and just allow it.
There would be a decal in the bus saying that there is video and audio recordings being made now.
Is this something that the bus company pays for, in terms of inserting these devices, you know, the cameras and the VDRs, whatever it is, on each and every single bus? Or is that something they're going to look to the school district to have a fund as part of an amendment to their contract? Does the state provide, you know, some sort of subsidization of these costs? I'm just trying to think about, you know, the hundreds of buses that are running around and now putting these devices in every single bus, who's paying for it?
I don't have an answer, but I will ask.
That's, it's a good question. I know Owen J. Roberts, a couple of years ago...
you know, the cameras and the DDRs, whatever it is, on each and every single bus? Or is that something they're going to look to the school district to fund as part of an amendment to their contract? Does the state provide, you know, some sort of subsidization of these costs? I'm just trying to think about, you know, the hundreds of buses that are running around and now putting these devices in every single bus, who's paying for it?
I don't have an answer, but I will ask.
That's, it's a good question. I know Owen J. Roberts, a couple of years ago, decided to go to multiple cameras within the bus, and Owen J. Roberts paid for it. Now, I don't know if there's a grant from the state or not. Other questions or comments from board members on audio on school buses? Any public comment on audio on school buses?
Cindy McKeever's for our listening. I don't know what the cost will be if there is any cost, but the horrors of riding school bus to school. You really should take a school bus one day. The poor school bus driver, God bless them, they have those high seats mandated by law to protect their kids, but if we can at any point add audio, it's a reign of terror on those buses, especially when you get to the older kids, which middle school is such an awkward age, and some of those kids, it brings out, you know, high testosterone and whatever other hormone levels is going on, and it's just a brutal atmosphere. And sometimes they just can't enforce behavior because they couldn't hear, you know, along with the action. So it really, you really need to ride one of those buses. When you get the text from your kid again and again, "The bus got turned around again today, Mom," because someone was so poorly behaved that they had to go back, and the principal had to talk to that bus, you really think to yourself, it's a privilege to ride that bus. Even in the handbook, if the kid has to sign, the parent has to sign at the beginning of the year, your child's going to be recorded on that bus, because it really protects everyone. Because let's face it, just a few kids that maybe were taken the opportunity of unsupervised, you know, bus ride that could take up to 45 minutes to have poor behavior, that affects everyone on that bus. So if we could get the bus company to pay for it, that'd be even better, because I think it would really protect them. So just as a, as an input to that, I don't know if you have kids that ride the bus, but it can be a harrowing experience.
Thank you.
Mrs. Torshia, do the policies have to be tightened up to address individuals who are causing the disruption on the bus?
I don't, I don't believe that the policies need to be tightened up. I just think that it's the number of students and the inability for the adult to be attentive to what's going on, on the bus, and for us to be putting harsher, probably consequential, plans in place. It wouldn't incorporate policy, it would be part of the process that we use to discipline students on different infractions.
Mrs. Bites, because of the time tonight and the fact that we're going to have an executive session after the meeting, I had put this role clarification on the agenda, and I'm going to ask that we postpone that to another meeting, but that's sort of one of the items. What you're discussing is discipline of an unruly student, and that's an administrative function, that's not a board function.
Well, if the policies need to be tightened up so our admins can enforce the proper behavior on the bus, then that is our role.
No, they have sufficient authority to discipline the child.
That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Any other public comment on transportation? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. The following committee vacancies. Mr. Wolf generously offered to just slot right into the committees vacated by Mrs. Duncan, and I thanked him, but I also told him that I would have liked to see, and if there's any other board members that would refer to switch committees at this time. Mr. Speed, who's not here tonight, is already on the facilities committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mrs. Radowski, and he would like to switch, he would like to go on the revenue enhancement committee, because they meet on the same night. And that way he'd be doing two committees in one night. And if we approve that, then that would vacate his position on the curriculum and instruction committee. So that's, I guess, my first question.
How many kids have been on CNI now?
We have four.
So you only need three.
Right, so we don't, we don't have to fill that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you don't have somebody else volunteering, I'm just saying. I mean, there's an opportunity for somebody to jump on CNI, but if nobody wants to or can't because of time constraints and everything else, I mean, I don't think it's an issue for Mr. Speed to move over to revenue, but as long as there's room, and then...
There's room. There are three on revenue, but he would like to go on that.
Myself, Mr. Dody, and Mr. Kurtz.
Mr. Kurtz? Unless Mr. Wolf wants to do it.
Well, I say unless, and I know, you know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Kurtz. I know he graciously was the third member so that we didn't, we could have quorums, but if he doesn't, if he, if it suits his time to not be on it, I won't be offended.
I have been on it for three years, so that might be a lot for revenue enhancement. If you want, I don't, I'm happy to continue, I'm happy to leave.
All right, you guys break it down. I just say, I will be offended if you don't want to come to revenue enhancement.
Before we have them fight it out, I mean, the board has to approve my recommendations, and I'd like to recommend that Mr. Speed does move over to revenue enhancement.
Are we doing that tonight?
Well, if you're going to have a policy committee meeting this week, you only have two members on the policy committee.
Yeah, can we, are we going to do it all at once?
Yeah, I'd like to. I mean, this could be quick, there's no reason not to.
So we're saying Mr. Speed is going to be on revenue enhancement?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf is on facilities and policy, and perhaps Mr. Wolf is also on revenue enhancement?
That would be hard.
Well, one of them would come on.
That would be, you're right, I'm sorry.
So if you wanted, if you wanted to back out of revenue enhancement, then I'll do that.
Is there a quick negotiations also, maybe that Mr. Wolf might...
Well, you have, you have four on negotiations. And we'll get, I have a note here on that in a second, but, so Mr. Speed would go to revenue and revenue enhancement, and Mr. Wolf would go to facilities and policy and replace Mr. Kurtz on curriculum and instruction?
No.
No?
On revenue enhancement. I still want to be on curriculum and instruction.
So facilities is Wolf, revenue enhancement is Speed and Wolf, and policy is Wolf.
Yes.
And we don't have anybody on CNI?
When does CNI?
We meet right before the committee hold.
And there are, there are three on...
You only need three on a committee, and only two to hold a meeting.
Yes. If, if nobody else would want to be on CNI, I would be on. I may not make every meeting, but I mean, I'd be willing.
Sure.
We have three, you'd be fourth. So if you didn't make the meeting...
But it's the same night, so I'm here anyway. Let's sit there. Whether I'm here for seven hours or six, um...
She's looking for dinner, though, I think.
Good luck. I am too. Like I said, I may not make every meeting, but it was, I sat on curriculum and instruction. I mean, in the very beginning for, I don't know, a year. It was interesting.
All right, so just so I have this, Mr. Wolf would go on policy, correct?
Unless you want to...
Mr. Wolf would go on facilities.
Yes.
Mr. Radowski would go on curriculum and instruction, which, in place of Mr. Speed.
Yes.
And Mr. Speed and Mr. Wolf would go on revenue enhancement, and...
Mr. Kurtz would step off.
And Mr. Kurtz will be leaving.
Yes.
Okay. That's the recommendation, and it's up to the board to approve it.
I move the committee's non-disciplinary recommendation. They were filing. I mean, I don't know if we have to fish a boat, I mean...
Okay.
Should we show hands or dissent to me?
I don't see any, I don't see any dissent. One other thing for the board to, one other thing for the board to concur, Mr. Basil has asked Mr. Wolf to temporarily replace him on the negotiations committee. I have no problem with it. Is there any other thought or comment on it? Seeing none, Mr. Wolf, you are now on negotiations.
All your names are filled up.
I had too much spare time.
Yeah, I figured.
You, you said yes.
I did.
All right, and the last item under old business is a $2,500 fee for the balanced light and sound. I have a question, because I went through my emails from Ken Smith, who says the sound system at the stadium is fine.
I don't think that it's fine for the venue that you are proposing, such as graduation and the amount of speakers that come up, and the ability for everyone to hear. I can tell you that when I'm, I can only tell you what I've heard when I'm there for events, such as sporting events and the system, so I'm not sure. I think fine would be adequate, but I don't think it would be excellent for this occasion.
There's a difference between like the acoustical capability that the system has for making announcements versus hearing a speech, an intelligible speech.
And when?
If you were, if you were in the audience two years ago at the graduation, it was, it was, it was a horror. Okay? And I think the, the amount of complaints that we got about the intelligibility, and rightfully so, this, that system is not designed for that in line. You want to know who made the tackle or scored the goal, and you're making short announcements and bursts, that's, that's how designed, it'll work as designed. But if you're reading a speech, announcing names, something that's, you know, going through continual speech, it's just not designed for that purpose.
And I'll tell you, that was the worst part of sitting there and listening to the valedictorian get up and speak, and people from, doing shout-outs from the crowd, "We can't hear you, we can't," you know, the poor girl.
Something like here.
You know, couldn't, couldn't complete a sentence without being interrupted because people were shouting at her. I thought, I was, it was, it was really embarrassing, and, you know, I didn't think it was appropriate conduct, and, you know, I didn't think it just really demeaned the whole, the whole ceremony in a way, and I wouldn't, you know, that was my hesitation for moving this thing back to the stadium, you know, to the stadium.
The whole conversation we had about not booking Auburnia was that we could have a sound system.
Well, and, right, and we did, I remember when we talked about it, that we said, I mean, they said somebody, administration said somebody would have to come in, and we'd make sure that it was, it was good, but it would be something that had to be done.
Yeah, the only thing I would ask is, can this, do you have, do we have until next Monday to finalize this?
I know that they are in the process of trying to get their materials together that they don't own to put into place, so...
Two weeks, get this thing done.
But I'm, this is rental, correct?
Yes.
So if we have graduation...
They will be, they actually would set up the same thing for inside at the same, there wouldn't be a change.
What I'm saying is, we would, we would have this, this would be a yearly expense.
If you, yes, if you continue to go with the outside venue, or if you go with the inside venue because of having overflow and not limiting students to the amount of participants, then if it would rain Friday, and it would rain again Saturday, and we'd have to go inside, he would set up the same sound system to be able to accommodate the quality sound in the caf, in the gymnasium as well as the auditorium, because we would have to have overflow there. So he is prepared to take this in or outside. And yes, it would be a reoccurring cost each year if you want to, to have...
I assume we had a, we did have a couple to hold out with this.
This, this person was the person who was contacted. I believe Dr. Sankar had told Mr. Henkel to move forward. This person is also in, within our school district. I think that's why they were being sought out, that it was, you know, supporting a business within Daniel Boone.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathgib, second by Mr. Wolf. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Dody?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgib?
Yes.
This is, Mr. Radowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Sorry. I was hitting Mr. Speed.
Is there any public comment on old business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. We're required to elect a school board treasurer effective July 1st through June 30th of the following year. Are there any volunteers to be board treasurer?
So far, it hasn't really been all that hard. Unless, if someone else would like the chance, they're welcome to, but I'd be happy to serve you.
Mr. Wolf, you're on everything else, you don't want to be that too?
Is it going to be T-Rex over here?
Mr. Radowski is volunteer. Any discussion, comments, questions?
I think you do a great job.
Is this someone that pays?
She's highly qualified.
Yes, you get a, you get a 5% increase.
I think you get a coke.
Is there a motion to approve Mr. Radowski's treasurer?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mrs. Bites. Without comments or questions, Mr. Basil.
Just do this the old, uh, quick way here. This will be an ads local vote. What's your vote's the contrary? Very none, motion passes.
Thank you, Mrs. Radowski.
Congratulations, Mr. Radowski. Mrs. Bites, a donate now discussion?
I'd like to table that discussion, if I continue the research.
Okay, that's tabled.
She's tabled it, tabled it.
The automated education substitute operator discussion, Mrs. Torshia.
Before I go into that, I just want to let you know that our girls softball team went into extra innings, and then they had to play something called a man on second note, a tiebreaker, so they started man, but anywhere our girls ended up winning, 3 to 2 at the... So their winning streak continues, and they are undefeated. Sorry, I had to interject that because that was big stuff. They were down, they were losing 2 to 1 almost the whole game until the bottom of the seventh inning, they tied up 2 to 2. So I know that...
Next time, get us a feed to have a...
All right. Aesop, I have been working with Scott Matts with regards to some things that we can do to improve technology or pieces of technology. Not that Aesop is a piece of technology that we currently have, but what it is, is it's an automated substitute calling program. It's used almost exclusively by all schools, and I know that Mr. Small could speak to it even from the school district that he came from. We currently have a human being that makes the phone calls, gets the phone calls early in the morning, fills what they can, and then our secretaries and principals are left with whatever was not covered. This program allows you to post your absences early if there's personal days that are being taken, if there would be a bereavement, if there would be sick time, et cetera. And you actually have approved subs that you, the school board, has control over of who you're approving to, to work, and they can go in and pick the dates at work for them. And they're doing the work, and then we get, find out what holes we have to replace. It, and it's more, it's more than that. There's, I have information that I will send out to you. I'll scan it and send it to you as an electronic version, but I wanted to just have some conversation about, would you be interested in us moving, you know, forward and looking at this? It would definitely make us more efficient in providing sub coverage. We have a lot of days where we have teachers that are covering because, classes because we don't have subs to cover. And especially when the cold and flu season is at its height, we, you know, are usually short a little bit more. So I just wanted to let you know that there was some discussion. We would like to try, if the board would support it, we would like to put it into place. There would be a cost, excuse me. We currently sell, pay our subservice a stipend of $4,300, $4,364. We also pay for a phone line at $25 a month. So at the end of the day, for this school year, we've paid this person $4,664. Moving ahead, if we would go with Aesop, we would pay $13,000 the first year because of a $4,000, almost $5,000 implementation cost, and then it is also attached to the number of people, personnel, and I can show you the breakdown. The second year, years two, three, et cetera, would come down to about $9,000.
What was the first number?
The first number was 13,000.
4,000. Four thousand.
Six sixty.
Four thousand something.
For the person?
Yeah.
Okay. $4,664. The estimate or the, what it would cost next year would be $4,794 for the 2014-15 school year. So this is just something that Scott has started to look into. He also was looking at doing a better job with our time clock system that's currently in place and they evidently can work together in some ways, I guess, for our subs, for aides who would be out as well. And there would be a savings if he went to a Veritime cost. That's what it's called opposed to our time clock plus. And we currently are paying over $8,000 a year for that. We would pay $500 less if we went with Veritime for the first year and then the years after that would be $6,000. I'll provide that, this breakdown for you.
$6,000 less?
No, $6,000.
So $2,000.
Right, $2,000 less. So this is something that we're looking at to try to make ourselves a bit more efficient with how we're managing our time clocks and our substitutes.
So with the substitutes, you're saying we're more efficient. We're talking in terms of actually filling the vacant positions. Not efficient in terms of money saving efficiencies.
No, it would be more about the fact that it's an automated web and phone based substitute placement program. We would be able to build reports. You would be able to track absences. There's a whole reporting trend to it and it claims that it eliminates absence forms and other paperwork. It states that they decrease employee absenteeism, cutting substitute costs. There's a lot of things that it promotes. So again, I'll forward that to you and I'll bring it back up to see if there's any other information that you would like and if we could move forward with that.
Comments or questions on Aesop?
I'm not an Aesop expert yet, but I'll.
I think to the level that you can detail, you know, a, obviously it's pretty easy to see right up front what the cost differences are going to be, but in terms of efficiencies, if there's a way to quantify that, that's going to make it a little easier for us to make a decision.
Well, Mrs. Torsia, you said that the service receives 46, 700.
Yes.
Are there people that are tied up in addition to that?
There are. There are people that still have to work on getting subs after the service is done. Anyone that, and I'm sure, you know, when you have an emergency and you're expected to be at work and something happens, you know, we're always going to have those. But I know that the high school has not had a lot of success with the subservice and they've taken on their own subplacement and I'm hoping that that will eliminate that responsibility at that level.
Is there some sort of average, annually average, like a daily average of how many subs?
I could probably just look at my one week and give you an idea.
And that's something we would have with Aesop.
Aesop then, yes, keeps all of those records and yes, and that's what I think Mr. Basil is looking for is for me to be able to break all the things down in a bullet type of way so that it's easy to read.
That'd be great, thank you.
Does the current subservice that we use, are they calling, I mean, are they calling state our subs list or is it the same one we would?
They are, but Aesop, no, they're calling our approved subs and Aesop opens us up to more subs that have to be approved by this board, but when they're integrated within the system, you might get more people that would be willing to.
I just was asking because I was wondering why they have trouble getting subs for high school. You know, if they're pulling the same people that we would be calling.
I'm not sure and I would have to look into exactly where the breakdown has come with regards to the high school and the subservice.
That's actually a good question because is it just that the service we're using is not living up to the responsibility? I mean, if they're leaving two or three vacancies that our secretaries can then fill by making phone calls, then they should be able to do what you would think.
And I don't know the answer to that, but I will look a little bit deeper as to why we're not consistent.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rathgib.
I was just going to say, I know if you have the planned absences like for leave, that could be very common, something like that, that someone can go on that site, I believe, or at least in advance and plan out their work schedule and say, oh, I'll go sub here, here, here. So instead of that day off, I'm trying to fill some spots.
And this next item, let me preface it by saying Mrs. Torsia does not have the numbers yet to go with the item, but I think it's important that she explains what she's researching because I think it's a benefit to the school and to the public.
As part of my realignment proposal, I had spoken to the teachers, the staff, teachers and staff are the same, the community. And I spoke to them about trying to reach out to someone to help with our half day kindergarten program, to be able to offset it, to have something in place for students when they're not in morning kindergarten, that they would still be in an educational environment and maybe we could partner with somebody. Well, the YMCA program stepped up and said that they would be very interested in leasing space in one of our buildings to provide continued enrichment or curriculum kindergarten level for children that while they're not in their half day kindergarten program, which we own and we're delivering instruction, that they would be supporting our curriculum in that other half of the day, whether it be morning or afternoon. And they told me that they currently have this program in place in two schools, O&amp;J Roberts and Pottstown, who still have half day programs. And they literally set up space within their school and those children in kindergarten, when they're done in the morning, they go to that daycare YMCA program and those children in, you know, that are in that daycare go into the PM classroom. They, in their proposal that they provided me, they said that they would, that the Y would pay a mutually agreed upon fee to the school district for the use of the schools. They didn't say what that was and I think that we need to have a little bit of conversation with regards to what you're thinking and as well as me providing what O&amp;J and what Pottstown might be receiving as a result. They also mentioned that their program, that they are tied to the state and so that they are capable of providing this service to parents who struggle financially, that, you know, children that receive free and reduced lunch currently and they would, if they would qualify for free and reduced lunch, they would qualify for a free and or reduced or however they go about this program. They have a lot of things already in place with the state, so this would be really a pretty easy turnover within our district if we chose to move forward with it. Right now, I would only be able to provide space at Monocacy because Amity is still quite full, but we would, I would promote to support those children at Amity and if we had to transport students from Amity to Monocacy back to Amity for that half day program, then that's what I would also recommend. So if you would like, I will continue to have conversation, get more information so that I can be more specific, have them give me a more detailed proposal with regards to what type of a fee structure would be set up. And the gentleman, the executive director that I worked with is very excited and would like to see this take place in September. He feels as though he could have it in place right away.
So maybe all they can do is, do they have any idea how many students they would expect to enroll in this?
No, I think we would have to get information out to parents and say, we're offering this and see how many people would be willing to.
How many, how many do we have? How much space do we have? Like how many kids do you think we could provide it for or they can provide it for based on space?
I would have to look at Monocacy and find out exactly what my available space is, but I think that we would be able to support pretty much what we have in kindergarten.
So I guess the question.
I don't remember because it's been a record. In the budget right now, are we providing midday transportation or are we not providing midday transportation?
My understanding is that midday transportation was put back into the budget, but we weren't going to be transporting children across town. If you go to Amity, you would not get transported to live and learn in Birdsboro for your daycare. You would need to select something closer to your, that is within your school. Now, Monocacy is kind of in the middle, so they would be able to go a couple of different directions.
But I know when we voted to put kindergarten back in, we didn't vote to put transportation.
That's correct.
But I don't, I don't know where we got.
So, well, I think it just got slipped in.
I think that through conversation.
The last presentation that was made, midday transportation's back in, I think.
I think that was a decision made administratively, not by the board. That was a business manager who ever decided.
Or maybe even with Patty, Dr. Sankar still being here. I just kind of.
That's $139,000 according to this number that I'm looking at. Whether that's true or not, I'm not sure. But I guess my question was, as it relates to the YMCA program, the interesting thing is if they pay in terms of lease fees, both in Pottstown or O&amp;J Roberts. And I'd be curious to know what the transportation company would think if we had to move students between buildings, whether we do that for the bus, maybe the lease fee pays for the bus or if we had midday transportation, maybe there's an earlier run prior to that that moves students from one building to the next.
We'd have to work that part out.
There's a cost there, but I don't know what the, I'm just thinking that if you could certainly have a conversation with the transportation companies about what their thoughts on how we may do facilitate something there that would enable this program, maybe easier for parents to participate. It may be a win-win for the business.
Yeah, and that's, we discussed this in curriculum. I mean, we would need the numbers because if their lease cost, their lease payment to us would cover the transportation, it's not necessarily a revenue enhancement, but it's a service.
It's a service.
Yeah. So I think it's worth pursuing. We need numbers.
So they were very excited and I was surprised that they had contacted me because I felt that they were off the table with regards to having any interest in the, Mr. Albert said, you know, that would be not true, that they are very excited and happy to put something like this together.
Did you also want to mention Alvernia?
Yes, and at the same time, Mrs. Bytes was pounding the pavement for me, looking for anyone else to partner with us. And Alvernia College met with me, two of their staff members with regards to this idea. They said that they couldn't put a program in place that they wouldn't be able to support what the Y is, but what they would like to do is they would like to partner with the Y, with the school district, to continue to be able to put students through the early childhood classrooms and give them experiences, observation hours, hands-on. The Y became very excited about that partnership too, knowing that they would have, you know.
Support.
Yes. So, and that we would, we also, we currently do bring their student teachers into our buildings, so it wouldn't be anything more, but that they would really be looking at, you know, providing some extra support, especially with my K-12 building.
On that one of those same lines, that's also an opportunity for the Career Technology Center students because they have a good early child development program there.
Yes, it would be.
If they're going to do a co-op, hey, might not.
Right here.
It's a great opportunity.
Yes, I didn't think about that. So that's what I've been doing in the last week.
Well, thank you and thanks to YMCA and Alvernia and I think that Mr. Wolf pointed out, BCDC is willing to utilize their resources as well.
They are very interested in our curriculum and enhancing what our kindergarten teachers are currently doing, so they want to be able to work with what the teachers are currently doing. So they don't want to come in and change it or do something different. They want to support what's being learned in the classrooms, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsia. Again, I'm going to table the role clarification discussion for tonight until we have a smaller agenda. Is there any public comment on new business?
I would just, I didn't get a chance because I came in a little bit late to talk about my support for elementary school band. You've all made it clear that you're supportive of it. I know when you listen to a duet of music, you hear the instruments, but when you hear a symphony, you're blown away. We were here last week for a concert and clearly it was such an energizing experience. It's the difference between seeing the picture of the Grand Canyon and going to the Grand Canyon. When you go to that concert, you're like, wow, this is significant. Some of the things that I'd like to bring is ideas to the table to keep this in our school district is, number one, we don't pay an activity fee for that band, for being in band. And I know that the upper levels do. Now, I'm not encouraging that we all have to pay more money for things, but it's be a lot cheaper than those private lessons. Number two, we use different stores in the area for music lessons, for instrument rentals and for our supplies of music books, theory books, et cetera. Have we talked to those stores about what their capacity is to bring a music program? They're already in our schools and they have the financial incentive to bring us something that's more affordable. So, I mean, they've got skin in the game, so to speak. You know, someone who's just coming in to teach us lessons and spending a lot of money, it just doesn't financially make sense for someone who's maybe struggling economically to have an instrument rental and a fee to get their student to be taught music. It really is a valuable experience for those kids that I call sideways learners, they're non-traditional thinkers. It'd be great to think that reading, writing, arithmetic are the only three things we need in life, but this isn't 1950. We've got to move into this world competitively and that includes music, it includes language. And I get that you're restricted with your budget, but maybe if we use some of those other resources in our community, plus maybe squeeze a little bit more out of our budget that cumulatively, we could keep this so valuable property inside our schools.
Thank you.
As a comment to that, we, my understanding, cannot charge a fee for a curricular.
For what? I'm sorry?
You can't charge a fee for something which a student receives a grade as part of the curriculum.
He doesn't get it on his report card, does he?
I'm just letting you know, if it's part of our curriculum, we can't charge a fee for it. That's what we ran into with, you know, activity fees and the band and those types of things, Marching Band, I think it was, or whatever it was when we were doing that.
There seems to be, I mean, there would seem to be an incentive for maybe those music stores that are going to lose those rentals of all those instruments and potentially decline, then it's not an effect. You're not going to lose your elementary school band students, but really you're going to lose a lot of middle school.
We understand the significance of it and, you know, like we had invited another older age in the school of music and coming down for a program after school.
I understand, I'm just saying maybe they don't have the skin in the game that the local music stores do. They don't, you know, you have a company a hole there where you have kids who have to go to those stores to get their supplies. Maybe they would have a program that they could also offer us at a lower cost to make it more affordable because some kids can barely make that instrument. It's just an idea, I'm trying to bring an idea.
Thank you.
Actually, if you're rather than not just be playing, because I think you all realize, again, if you see the energy from these concerts, seriously, it really is the difference between seeing the postcard and going to see the actual event, you'll be blown away.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming with solutions.
Any other presentations by the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.